Planning Board and Economic Development Committee members are here to hear your thoughts and have a discussion about present and future lodging issues here in Wolfboro. So, just to set the stage, in part, the Economic Development Committee is responsible for identifying areas and opportunities to enhance economic growth. The Planning Board is responsible, in part, for developing and proposing development standards. So, in 2015, after receiving a lodging feasibility study, the EDC contacted the Planning Board to ask to discuss the results of this study. One issue that we discussed was the current requirement that inns are restricted to a maximum of fifty rooms, and that's what the zoning requirements say presently. The EDC asked the Planning Board to consider removing this cap. The Planning Board is considering this request and is also considering developing architectural standards for new commercial buildings. So, that's sort of what we're here to discuss tonight and want to hear from you folks, your thoughts and any input that you want to give us. Let me introduce the Planning Board members. Paul O'Brien, Mike Hodder is here, John Thurston, Von Dugan, and Brad Jarman is here. Did I miss a Planning Board member? I think I got everybody. Okay, so you know who the Planning Board members are. And now I'm going to turn this over to Kathy Eaton, who's the chairman of the Economic Development Committee.
Thanks Kathy. I'll just add to her that what we're hoping to hear today is an exchange of ideas. We're going to be listening to you, your comments, and appreciate very much your coming tonight. As I said to somebody, well, it could be snowing, at least it's just raining out there, so thanks for coming out on kind of a nasty night. I'd just like to take and add to that that it was as a result of the B R N E, Business Retention and Expansion Survey that we undertook back in 2014 and 2015 that some of you were part of. One of the issues that came up at that time was concern about whether or not we had enough lodging. That and additional information that came into us, which is what caused us to talk about doing the survey. That survey was actually done by the Wentworth Economic Development Corporation, which is a private nonprofit on their own, and then that came back to us to be discussed. So, just to add a little bit more background to that, I'd like to introduce members of the Economic Development Committee who are able to make it here tonight. And I have, right here is Cindy Patton from Blacks, Mary DeBries, Director of the Wolfboro Chamber of Commerce, Denise Roy Palmer, Director of WETCO, myself, and is there anybody else? Please wave. Dave Owen is always with us, town manager over here. For those of you who don't know, Matt Sullivan, our new town planner in the white shirt right there. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Kathy.
Thank you. Sorry, Matt, I'm not going to mention Matt Sullivan is also here. Okay, most of you, if you received invitations, you saw that we did have some suggested questions. That was just to give you some background and to get the conversation started tonight because that's what we want to do, is to have some dialogue. Also, you may want to comment to us on any obstacles that you folks may encounter as business owners, or if you're planning on expanding your business, or something of that nature. You may want to comment on us, comment to us on any barriers that you perceive may exist. So, anyway, you open things up here and if somebody wants to...
Just to know, I have two my calls with me, so if the work hours fly me out, I'll run over to you and talk to you.
My name is Dave Peterson, I own the Lake Motel. I bought it in 2003, I've been, this is going on our fifteenth season. Now, when I read the report, I had some issues with it. I understand what Wolfboro is trying to do, but I, there's, ever since I bought the Lake Motel back in 2003, it's always been said that we don't have enough rooms. And I think that's a fallacy, and I'll tell you why. When I first bought, when I was talking to the innkeepers that we have here, weekends in the summer, we would call up, if we're full, I would call up the Wolfboro Inn, or they would call me, or I'd call the Inn on Main, and some of the B and Bs, you guys have a room, I have somebody here that walked in. So, we would try to fill up the area. So, even back in 2003, we weren't, we had plenty of rooms. And there's some things that are not in this report that I think is, there's a huge trend going on right now. And one of them is Airbnb, that nobody talks about, it's not, and it's huge. And I went online just tonight, and it's fifty-five establishments in Wolfboro and Tuffinboro that rent rooms. And there's like two-hundred-and-thirty beds. And if you take that, that's almost four to five hotels. In the, in the problem that we have in Wolfboro, I feel that it's been, kind of, this fallacy going on is that on weekends, we have a lot of weddings, so people want a one-night stay. Well, that's not really what Wolfboro is all about. Because, and I'm not trying to diminish weddings or anything, but they come here, they party, they kind of do what they do when they leave. It's not really what we want to promote. I am putting a lot of money into the Lake Motel, we're actually changing the name this year, the Crescent Lake Inn and Suites. I put in three new buildings, we've got one more phase to go, and we're trying to get longer stays for people to stay here, families, we're really family-oriented, I have many kitchens now. And this is what we're trying to promote. And I, you know, I have weddings, call me up, they want one-nighters, and I tell them, listen, Airbnb will take care of it, we have that. There's, there's, there's things that haven't been mentioned in this report, we have Lady of the Lake, which is downtown, which rents rooms for weddings. We have Laughing Moon, which wasn't in this report, that has thirty-six, that rents on weekends just for weddings. The Wind Drifter, I don't know, wasn't included in the rooms they rent. Brewster Academy, on the, in the summertime, rents rooms out for parties they have there. I mean, there's a lot of fallacies going on here that we need more rooms, and it's just not true. Airbnb is becoming a huge trend, it really is. I actually started advertising two weeks ago, and I've gotten like seven requests. It's huge, and I think it's just going to grow. So, the situation, we have more rooms, I think Wolfboro in its natural course is taking care of that. There's trends where people are buying luxury homes and renting out high-end rooms for Airbnb, there's no restrictions. Now, I talked to Matt about, you know, maybe that's a problem, Wolfboro is going to get the nine percent estate, I'm not sure how the state deals with that. But it's a, it's, it's a situation where it, the problem in Wolfboro is being taken care of by the locals by renting out their rooms, just on weekends, because during the week, we're not full. And I'm trying to do that by having family-oriented, longer stays with mini kitchens, and it, and I'm trying to expand, and there's a lot of things I'd like to do, but I'm restricted. And it kind of irritates me a little bit when there's been talk about putting a franchise in, the Holiday Inn, and changing, you know, the fifty rooms to accommodate them, but we've been here, this building's been here since nineteen fifty-six, and I can't do the comp, this is going to be my competition, and I can't compete with them, because I just can't, the restrictions tell me I can't. So, it's not fair. And I know the Wolfboro Inn, seven or eight years ago, remodeled, and they were trying to do different things, and they were shut down. It's just, and I understand the problem with Wolfboro, there's other trends going on too, you know? Airbnb is going into renting boats now, there's a whole thing about renting boats. Mariners are changing over to hotels now because they're renting out boats. That is a huge trend, and I don't, I, we just got to be really careful what we do, because if you put in something that has ninety rooms in downtown Wolfboro, it'll kill us, okay? It will kill us. And we've been here for a long time, and I've been in this town, supporting this town, my son went to school here. And for me to compete with that, I would have to try to get a variance to put in a conference center, a restaurant, okay? Because I can't put a restaurant in, and I wouldn't put a restaurant in because that would hurt Morrissey's front porch, why would I do that to them? You know what I mean? So, we, we really should think as a town, what we want to be. And I think that if you want to help the lodging, help the lodges that are here now, what are those, their concerns? You know, we want to make the rooms a little bit bigger. We, we've got to look at the restrictions that we have on the lodging we have now and look at them, and see what we can do to improve our situation. And I'll tell you, putting in a franchise somewhere with a pool, with a conference center, with a restaurant, they have everything there, it's going to hurt us. And, and this is the problem, I know that the, I think it's the Holiday Inn in Rochester, there was four investors, they're putting money in every single month because they're not making it. Now, there's a lot of people that have money that don't mind burning money, but that doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. And it might hurt this town in the long run. Just, I'm just saying, be careful. I know that we want to grow Wolfboro, and I agree, we have to have more events, we have to have a reason for people to come here, not just weddings. We're promoting weddings a lot, which is just weekends, and most of the time, it's just one night. I get calls all the time, they just want July, Fourth, you know, that whatever that Saturday is, they want that Saturday night. And what we're doing now is that we have a problem, but the Airbnb is taking care of that problem. It really is. And I know during the summer, if, if I'm not full, if the Wolfboro Inn's full, they'll call me and say, hey, we got a walk-in, you need a, oh yeah, bring him down. And that's how we fill up, we all work together to fill it up. And I tell you, putting in a big hotel with not, you know, ninety-plus rooms or whatever is, is not the right look that I think Wolfboro wants. Sorry, I could talk all day. I have thirty-six plus six P and B, I have forty-two.
And year-round?
I'm sorry?
Year-round?
We do open year-round, but see, I only open one building, fourteen rooms, in the wintertime, because it's just, we're not busy enough. I mean, I can open up more buildings once we get, you know, once I do the third phase, I'll have three buildings that are winterized, but right now, we only open up one room, which is fourteen rooms.
Dave, when you, when you mentioned obstacles that you had in terms of growth, can you be a little bit more specific, was it, was it the restaurant, was it the conference?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's not that, it's where I am. I am a non-conforming business in a residential area, even though I've been there, you know, since it was nineteen fifty-six, with certain restrictions I have, which is the zone, which is, you know, but see, I shouldn't be penalized if somebody else puts a hundred rooms somewhere and I can't compete with them. And so, that's the biggest issue. Now, I, I've worked with the town for the last eight years, growing my business, and they've been super. The Planning Board has been great, Rob Housman, when he was here, helped me build my business. I mean, I'm working now to kind of keep going, we want to change the name to, like I said, the Crescent Lake Inn and Suites, we want to get rid of motel, it's dated, we're no longer a motel, more of a resort. But I can't, I don't want a restaurant, because that would hurt Morrissey's, it's just not going to happen. And, and I know we need facilities for big events, you know, an indoor, that accommodate at least two, two-hundred-and-fifty people. Now, I have a piece of land and I can do that, next door, it's four and a half acres right next door to that. And we're working with the town now, see what we can do. I mean, this scares me now, that why would I go ahead and do that? The big thing is, is a restaurant. If I'm going to have parties or, you know, some type of conference, even weddings, I, I won't get that much money by just, you know, renting the building out. I would need the catering, I need the, the money for the restaurant. I, the caterer that I hire come in, he would make a lot of money. So, like the Wolfboro Inn does a soup to nuts, which they, they make money by doing that. So, I'm restricted on what, what I can do and how many rooms I can have, how big the rooms are. I want to, I want to expand, because I'm not sure if everybody knows where I'm located, I have a great beach area, I have a great facility, it really is, I'm lucky to have it, and I just...
Is the alley right here? This one? Do you want? Do you want? Yeah. I, I'm just, I was just wondering, I mean, you know, the alley, I mean, this would be a topic for discussion in terms of the, I voted that facility being upgraded to meet the need. I mean, if we're talking to meet the need within the community...
What, what, Bishop, Bishop, what is the need? You know, I keep...
Oh, I understand, there, there's a property out on...
Oh, I know that, but I know that alley, but what, you say you need a need, what is, I keep...
No, I'd rather, I'm, believe me, I'd much rather meet the need with the existing infrastructure that we have.
But, see, well, my point is, you say need, explain to me what that need is.
You've only been here for less than two years, so you don't have the history that probably...
See, we, I've been hearing that Wolfboro needs more rooms, needs more rooms, needs more rooms, that's the need.
I'll echo the Airbnb.
It's huge, it's huge, and it's, and it's growing, I'm not sure what the percentage are, but it's started two years ago, and it's getting big now. There's a lot of places that used to be sell furniture and antiques, turn their place into Airbnb, and they're making more money doing that.
Right, you know, and I was thinking about coming in...
Why you got in?
I'm sorry, Rich Wyman in our Gray Shingles Camp, so if I'm a minute.
What is it? Gray Shingles? Oh.
Rich Wyman, Gray Shingles Camp. Thank you. He's got a great, full coat there. Um, no, I was thinking about, um, about...
Thank you very much. Thank you both of you.
Anyways, I was, I was thinking about coming in, in terms of where the town, what does a town need if they were to bring more, what did the town, would the town do to bring more people in to fill up our rooms? You know, there's, there's scheduled events throughout the year, but I'm thinking as a, you know, I'm trying to think as a planning board or an economic development board, I'm just, let's say, let's say we want to have strawberry festival, we're going to grow strawberry maybe. I mean, you know, if there's a, there's something, there's going to be, we would like to bring more people here with festivals, with music... I agree one hundred percent. There needs, and it's, it's kind of dated, I mean, I, you know, the, um, it's dated because I've only been here a couple of years, but I would like to see bigger plans, and I think that's what the Economic Development Committee, Committee would like to see going forward. What, I'm sorry, were you the first?
I'd, I'd like to just...
Richard, there's a, I'm on a committee that I missed a couple of meetings, but a special event committee that's working on getting, and I'll tell you, we welcome your ideas, getting in there, and, and I agree, getting certain events that will bring people into Wolfboro in the fall, winter, spring, you know, summer, I agree. And that's what we're trying to do.
So, the question would be if, you know, to, to, if we wanted to grow in that direction so that we can bring more people to the city, and then put that down to every, every restaurant, to every, every clothing store, to, you know, how it goes.
I just, would just address one thing that you said, Rich.
Sure.
Steve Durgan on the Economic Development Committee just came in. The, Dave is serving on one of three committees that came out of this big Business Retention and Expansion, and of course, the basis of why we want you folks here tonight, why we want to talk is because first and foremost, both the Planning Board, the Economic Development Committee realize we want to help our existing businesses prosper and do the, prosper and do the very best they can. That's where we come from, and to the detriment of our town. There's three committees that are working, the Special Events, which is working on increasing those, because that came out of the survey, Group Advertising, which is going to and is, the committee is moving forward by increasing, by, you'll be, you'll be approached sometime soon about this. Presently, the town and the economic, through the Economic Development Committee advertises in Yankee Magazine, advertises through Mill Falls Marketplace, reaching the people that are already here in the Lakes region, and reaching the southern New Hampshire through travel and special events, things with the Hippo newspaper, we've done that in the past. We've found some of those to be very effective. Yankee being extremely good to the point where we will now be in every issue of Yankee Magazine starting this next year. We hope to expand that further, and the activities and events that will bring people here for several days are a great part of it. So, just to touch on what is happening, I think is helpful to you, okay? We'll turn it back to Kathy.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shelley, and I am the General Manager of Wolfboro Inn. And so, I think what I'd like to do maybe is put a question out there first, which is, I read this study that was done in 2015, and I guess my first question is, what is the intent behind bringing in another hotel? I mean, do, is there a belief that there isn't enough hotel space, or is it a kind of a built-in and they will come kind of philosophy?
Okay, I think there's some confusion here. I, this lodging feasibility study is an abbreviated version, I don't know exactly what's in here, but that I guess went out to you folks along with the lodging form. Okay, there is no move to bring in a chain hotel, all right? This was a study that came out that said that this might be feasible for our town, but the focus is not at all on that. What is, and our present town regulations would not allow that. The move, the, the recommendation by the Economic Development Committee to remove the fifty-room limitation had as much to do with hopes that somebody like the Wolfboro Inn or the Lake Motel might increase their number of rooms. And the, so that is where we're coming from. We also would like to go back to that with conference facilities, you do conferences at the Wolfboro Inn?
We do, we, we have a ballroom space, we have another...
We'd like to hear more about that, and what you could do that would increase. I mean, if we can take pressure off of the summer season for all of our businesses in town by increasing our business in the fall, winter, and spring, it's going to be better for the, the health of the entire economy. Put people into your rooms in those off-seasons.
Right, that's, that's the challenge, I think, that we all face, and so, I'll disclose one piece of information about the Wolfboro Inn, which is that 2016 was a record-breaking occupancy year for Wolfboro Inn, highest occupancy level ever achieved at the Wolfboro Inn, it was fifty-six percent. And so, if you take into account the fact that July and August are our highest occupancy months, and we run about ninety to ninety-two percent occupancy in July and August, then I think you can infer from that that January, we're running twenty or thirty percent occupancy. So, you know, summertime business is a gimme for everybody. We do, I think last year, we, we had forty-seven wedding receptions at the Wolfboro Inn, and then we do a lot of other functions, and so, we had, you know, a couple hundred functions over the course of the year. We have outdoor space, so we have tents that go up for any of our neighbors who live near Wolfboro Inn, using a tent every weekend, and so, we have functions outside. So, we can accommodate two-hundred to two-hundred-and-forty people outside for a function, and then we have a ballroom space that accommodates one-hundred-and-sixty, another meeting room that accommodates about seventy-five, and then a boardroom, so we have a lot of meeting space. But again, I think it's, it's more, it was, my hope is that Wolfboro becomes a destination, and then we deal with the, the lack of lodging by the town. Does anyone know what the unemployment rate is in Wolfboro right now? That's one other question. That's just another consideration, which my, my next thought about, you know, even in the future, if we thought about, gee, wouldn't it be nice to have another hotel in Wolfboro? For those business owners who are struggling to find new round full-time employees. We have been understaffed at the Wolfboro Inn for probably three or four years, the kitchen runs by the skin of its teeth sometimes. And so, adding yet another property to that, I mean, the Wolfboro Inn, on average, employees about eighty people year-round, we have about sixty full-time people in the off-season, and we have about a hundred during the peak season, and we have a lot of positions that go unfilled because we can't find people in this area to work there, instead of adding, if that's ever a thought in the future, adding yet another lodging property, or taking that base level of available employees in this area, and you're spreading out for some...
So, that's something that we need to consider, is the full-cost housing for employees. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angie DeRis, my husband Andre DeRis, we are the Andrew family business, which is here in Rochester, on Miami, on Tupperboro. I wish that my grandfather helped me, he tended to, he's ninety-two years old, he really has the history, because he's seen people from the beginning. But I, I think we're not on the Wolfboro Inn attended hotels, although I did participate in that study, so I'm not sure why. We are seasonal, we open Thursday, Memorial Day, and we are open until Columbus Day, I remember. So, we are the last to leave Hutch Home in Wolfboro, under the original structure of Hutch Homes. So, there are some, this is Piper and Rock Rogers, which is a management company, they're individually owned, we are independently owned, and we've, it was actually open from nineteen forty-eight, but my family's owned it since nineteen fifty-five. So, we are, we do enter the in-season, which we all know is ninety, this is first of July through later, and that's it, that's your nine in-season weeks, which we are, we run at ninety-five percent. So, that's not a problem. So, our, our off-season is where we run about fifty percent, but we are seasonal, so we don't face the same challenges perhaps that other businesses face. I will agree with you, I don't think that we need another hotel, certainly not a chain hotel, in this town. But we do need to figure out how to fill the spaces, you know, that, that you're talking about. Certainly have plenty of people here, I do agree with that the Airbnb coming in and filling that space for weddings. So, for instance, you know, we have a two-off season, so once we get into our in-season, we weekly run to Saturday to Saturday. We have people all the time, say, oh, I just want to stay Friday night or Friday to Saturday night, the in-season is whatever, so we can't, we can't accommodate that. I have a couple of people who I know who run for, through Airbnb, and they do fantastically well on those exact types of fronts, Fridays, Saturdays, or just Friday nights. So, so there is a need, and that is being filled in that way, I agree with you. The challenge that our business faces is that we are, you know, taxes are on our property, so...
A lot of years ago?
They increased our, our taxes by sixty percent every year. Now, that would vary a business, I mean, it didn't, but it, it makes it very challenging because we are essentially a small business, we have four thousand, we do about four thousand bed nights a season, we can, rough calculation, very conservative calculation, saying each one of our guests maybe spends fifty dollars per person because you're staying a few nights, so we have, we're housekeeping cottages with kitchens. So, maybe each person spends fifty dollars, that's super concerning, assuming some are children, they would spend, well, we can do a calculation on how much money that gives to the town. I certainly think they've, they've spent a lot of the fifty dollars, because the comment's been, well, the cheapest part of our vacation, our rates are comparable to, you know, what's a town. The cheapest part of our vacation is staying here. You know, we are money-apposits in both, in, at the markets, at the restaurants, and that kind of thing. So, I think, you know, we, the, the reason that the shores are no longer literally cottages as they were once, and we have that history, that they put tax on them, so that doesn't exist anymore. So, that's just something to consider for properties. Thank you.
Someone else?
Someone else? Is there a comment or suggestion or thought?
A question.
Yes.
In order for a property to either be built or, can everyone hear me okay without the microphone? Okay, oh, for the microphone, okay. Scott from the Indian on me. Question to the planning board is, what type of requirements or restrictions are there now with commercial properties in the area? I mean, there has to be certain setbacks, there has to be certain height restrictions, setbacks from property lines. Where are we? I know we are in a residential area. We are surrounded by residential homes. So we find it to do, to do, we're very conscious of when we're doing events, not to have music late night. And so not knowing all the bylaws or covenants or ZBA restrictions, what does a commercial property, what are we looking at to expand or try to expand when we are in sort of this predicament where we are in a residential area, height, noise, setbacks? And I would imagine looking at properties all throughout Wolfboro, what's available, what's for sale, I don't see a lot of commercial property that is available in the town to put, to even think about putting a property of this size that the study has done, to even exist. So I guess I will fall to you to ask what type of, you know, requirements are or what can, what cannot we do, or can or can't we do in our situations to try to expand?
Right, the, you said you're, the in on main, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, you're in the same situation as the Lake Motel and the Allenay Motel and actually Gray Shingles also. They're all in residential zones. They're there either as pre-existing establishments or by way of a variance. And so the standards are really dictated by the underlying zone itself, which would be the residential setbacks and the zoning board of adjustment. And so that's, that makes expansion more challenging than like the Wolfboro Inn is in the central business district. We have the central business district, which is the downtown area, plus the Bay Street Limited Business District and the Wolfboro Falls Limited Business District. Inns are allowed in all of those zones, but as you've pointed out, the amount of property is at a premium, so that are not a lot of locations that we would consider conforming with our zoning regs.
So I guess what that's alluding to is if we're looking for more rooms and there are the heavy restrictions that we have, how can we foresee even thinking about this type of, this type of development going on here if your local businesses that have been here have paid their taxes throughout the years are allowed to maybe have that first right of refusal?
I got, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, Kathy, you said something about we want to change the 50 rooms because we wanted existing lodging to increase.
No, no, I didn't say we wanted to change it. I said we were asked to look at that issue.
Right, but there is, my point is, there's not one property in Wolfboro that has more than 50 rooms. So why would that have to be changed? There's not one property.
If, it, there's two, it's a two-edged sword here, Dave, when you look at it for yourself. So there, I see right off the bat, five properties that might be able to expand in Wolfboro that would be restricted because of that right off. If you, you have 42 rooms.
Yeah, but my point is, we shouldn't be, the rules shouldn't be that we should change it from 50 to higher. The rule should be that maybe existing property that's already commercial, that's been established for X amount of years, should have some leeway to grow, to increase, to not say, okay, you can't do anything, we're not going to change your residential area for non-conforming, we're just going to change the 50 rooms to 90 rooms. It doesn't help me.
I understand that. And that's why one of the things that we've talked about and I made a note here to ask you, what specifically is it that the present restrictions are keeping you from growing? So there's two issues. There's one that's zoning and then the other is the room. And we, I'll tell you where the 50-room thing comes from, is that we believe that it should be the business side, the entrepreneur should be able to make the decision in terms of what makes sense for them. What I understand is that for a lodging establishment to really be profitable, it needs to have that around 75 rooms because you're always going to have a certain vacancy and that, you know, that's kind of a formula. But we shouldn't decide that. The businesses should decide that.
Yeah, but my point is, there's been, lodging has been established in residential areas and they can't expand. They can't.
But maybe that could be fixed.
So you're changing the 50 to somebody else that will get a huge boost because that's what protects us, that 50 rooms, because it doesn't pay for somebody to come in here to put in 100 rooms because the 50 rooms won't pay for them. But if you do it for one, you should do it for everybody.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think we need to look at, look at those restrictions that are keeping all of our existing, a number of our existing businesses that's holding them back. It's not just the 50 room. It's the zoning restrictions that are hurting them.
And the thing too is that I think everybody that's not a lodging will understand this, is that we don't, the money to put in to remodel and to make the rooms back, you know, to where they should be, we have to increase the number of rooms so we can get the revenue to pay for that.
Exactly.
That is the issue that we have that's never been addressed. To put the money into remodeling or tearing down and rebuilding, we need more rooms, just like that 50 to 100 or 75, we also need that. So by not doing anything for us, by helping us spend the money to remodel so we can gain more rooms so we can make more revenue and pay for the remodeling, that's what my issue was. The only issue that I, that I could do this because I was on the water. I had a water bill. I could charge more a night because I had more modern rooms. That's the only reason why I could put the money in, keep the same number of rooms, because I can charge more because I'm giving some.
That's why we're here tonight, Dave, is to hear from you to say, hey, I'm stuck in this residential zone. I would like to expand. Help me do that. And that's what we need to hear.
I think everybody would understand. Everybody's in it. I think the in on main would love to increase their rooms.
I, maybe, honestly, I would rather, instead of expanding my business, I'd rather grow the business that I have in the off-season months. You can put, you can have a thousand rooms in June, I mean, Janu-, June, July and August. That's great, you have a thousand rooms. You'll probably fill them. There's a good chance that you will fill those rooms. What happens in October, November, December, January, February and March? You are sitting there dying. You've got to get people to get into the area and have year-round occupancy.
But you've got to, you've got to evaluate your own business and say, okay, if I remodel and build X amount of rooms, can I fill them? Can I get more money because I'm giving more amenities? It's not a 1950's building anymore. It's a, you know, 2017 and then you charge more.
Absolutely.
And I think we need quality rooms in Wolfboro. I think we need to, I, that's, I just think that...
I agree. I agree you need quality rooms. There's a lack of quality rooms and, I mean, Wolfboro is the oldest resort in the US. I understand that. There's great, nice cabins, cute little getaways. There's higher-end hotel rooms, there's boutique inns. Everyone, there's a complete mix. I can't, I don't think anyone can raise their hand in this room and say that they are not full in July and August. If you aren't, well, you probably need to look at your business. But it's the off-season months that you've got to get people in here. I mean, you can expand, you can expand and you can expand more rooms. All it does is carry a larger burden in your off-season.
Charles, we were up until about three weeks ago, I thought I had more water for lodging in Wolfboro with the Allenay and that didn't quite work out because of the money-acquainted investors in Wolfboro. That being said anyway, let me give you 50 years' worth of hospitality experience. If you own a hospitality business, it is forgettable relying on the community to generate your demand. It is up to you to generate your own demand. You should have one weekly event and one weekend event in 52 weeks of the year. If you find yourself full, you cancel the event, but you shouldn't have an event, whether it's a quilting bee, a monopoly tournament, an investor seminar. It is up to you to fill a property and there is, the Wolfboro Inn at 56% is an embarrassment to be very honest with you because that place should be full 52 weeks of the year. Same with the rest of them, but it's up to you to do that. Do not rely on the chamber, do not rely on the town. Build, be old and retired before that ever happens, guaranteed. Now, the problem with the zoning, it's a historical New Hampshire problem. Up until I-93 and 4-95 came in, between I graduated from UNH and 1916 hotel program, between 1916 and whatever date I-93 opened, New Hampshire never changed an inch. When they came through, all of a sudden, all of the town said, by God, we need zoning. Nobody had it other than the major cities to any great extent. The problem with Wolfboro sits, take a look at the statistics in zoning board of adjustment. I believe they have 56 or 52 cases this year. They only turned down three of them because the zoning in Wolfboro is not adequate or not properly configured to take care of, you have your property, your property and the Allenay sitting in residential places where they existed before the zoning came in as commercial properties. They should not have been redlined out. They should be commercial properties. So they can do things like the Allenay. To extend the back porches on that six inches, you have to go before the zoning board of approval to get an exemption to extend the porch six inches on a 6.3-acre property. That's crazy. So those are the problems with your lodging, the three or four major properties in town can't move because they're redlined. That needs to be addressed. In terms of coming in with a franchise, relax, we're not going to have it for one, two reasons. Until the Marius decide to, third generation down gets tired of the airport property, you're not going to have a late fund demand for a resort property, but that's where it's going when it happens. That could be, never the Marius get tired of it as just a franchise. The only property for sale in downtown with zone is out by the Excelsior Plant Days. Whoever owns that has a price of a million and a half dollars more than the economic value of the hotel. No franchise properties. First of all, franchises don't steal properties, they sell flats. It's up to individual investors to then build the property. Very few investors are pioneers to come into an area and build a 75 to 100-room property where there's not a demand for it. There's no demand on a year-round basis right now in Wolfboro for 100 rooms. They will come in after everybody else is fully around and then build a property. So until everybody does their job and there's a demand for more people, it's not going to happen. The other problem is, Marius lives another retail business downtown. The Chocolate Factory is now a construction office. Since I've only been here seven years and in seven years you've lost nine to 10 retail businesses. There are 14 businesses downtown that should not be in a retail zone and they are service businesses. Till the ordinance has changed and on the first floor, you may not have a service business in a retail place. You're going to lose the demand for traffic. Right now, you can do Wolfboro with three hours. That gets you one meal and you're gone. Add another 14 retailers and keep them open until nine o'clock during the summertime and you've got that much more demand from all of your lodging. Now, I understand that works for people who actually find it hard living in Wolfboro. For those that have retired here or are comfortable here, that can be a problem because it adds more traffic to the area that's already in the summer. And it may not be as comfortable to have people coming in and we don't really know who they are or they're going to spend money here and that keeps inviting. Right now, Wolfboro is not the vibrant downtown retail, contrary to what you may think of it for the July. But the rest of the time, Monday and Tuesday at this time of year, there's not enough business in Wolfboro to get these places open. As the economy improves, it actually is negative to a town like Wolfboro because in 2008, 2009, 2010, a lot of people that lived year-round couldn't afford to go away for winter. So they were here downtown. Economy's improved. This year, the businesses in Wolfboro over the winter did less business than they did the last two, three years because a lot of people bailed out. Boy, if you can go away from snowtime, they're gone. So the 6,000 people that supposedly lived here, 3,000 over in Florida or Arizona or wherever else. So you've got to attract, but individually the properties, look to yourself inside first. We were going to do the Allenay and convert that to the Lake Motel in and resort and make it the same thing that you're doing with changing the name to an inn. It changes the concept from drive-by. There is no such thing as a non-branded drive-by motel surviving because people don't stay. You've got to attract people who are willing to stay a weekend or a four-week, family stay for a week and they're spending that. Come in for one night.
Thank you. Other comments, thoughts?
I'm Heidi von Gertzke and I bought the 18-Town House on Center Street. Not because it's an inn, maybe because I love that old barn. I'm a winemaker. I will be growing grapes out there on Center Street. It's probably going to kill me because that is farmland and it's not good for growing grapes, but we'll see what we can do. The focus of my business is making wine, bringing people to the wine tasting room in that 91-foot barn. And oh yeah, by the way, I have a B&amp;B, so they're going to sleep there too. But we have three rooms and a little rental cottage out back, so I'm going to look to all the rest of you to provide the rooms when we do a harvest festival. Now, the grapes aren't in the ground yet and it's going to take a few years for them to grow. But we bring in grapes and we do a harvest festival and I do expect to see several hundred people come for harvest festival. And hopefully they're going to come for more than just a day because there's alcohol involved. And it's really good for us to do a harvest festival when my work is done. So the harvest festival is after that big holiday weekend in October. So after, after the Columbus Day folks are gone, then we put on a harvest... Columbus Day folks are gone, then we put on a harvest festival, and then sometimes room rates are a little bit better. Then there's the Christmas thing. There's the New Hampshire Open Doors, and we get on the map, and we get a lot of shoppers. And typically, those people do come for a weekend because we do the hot malt wine, we do specials. When our business was running in Bristol, our local shops were all open because we were open. If we weren't going to be open, they weren't going to be open. So I think with a winery and a vineyard, there's going to be some more opportunity to have off-season events because we are very busy in the summer selling wine just to locals. I don't need to have a festival in the summer. But I want my B and B filled in the winter too because I moved in January twentieth, haven't seen a soul, have not seen a soul yet. So we're working on the marketing end of that and trying to pull that together. But I really hope that when I put a festival together, the rest of you are going to work that with me by putting it on your website that there's a festival, and oh, by the way, you can go to the different inns and the different hotels to get a room, not necessarily have to stay right when you're drinking the wine.
Thank you. Thanks, Heidi.
Can I point out that Heidi's business was partially impossible by an application to the zoning board adjustment, which I am vice-chair for a variance. She successfully satisfied the five requirements the state requires, not Wolfboro, get a variance. She pardoned successfully, she got her variance, and she's now in business. The zoning board adjustment only acts as a safety valve for someone established by the voters of the town. All zoning ordinances in the town are voted on by the voters and not created by some unknown committee somewhere outside that nobody knows about. It's us that make these ordinances. The zoning board adjustment acts as a safety valve if somebody of commercial operation in a residential neighborhood finds itself constrained and can't grow for one reason or another. I would suggest that you first of all talk to our planner and describe the predicament. If he recommends an application for a variance, then have a lawyer recommend the same thing, come to the zoning board and argue for a case. We are set up by the state, specifically by statute, to act as a safety valve for the constraints that are imposed by zoning regulations on elderly business owners, but also ordinary citizens.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. That was so... Thanks for bringing that up.
Maggie Steer, I'm chair of the Heritage Commission, and I'd like to welcome Heidi and to say that Heidi has also applied to get a little bit of tax relief by entering her barn into the statewide program known as RSA seventy-nine D, a discretionary barn preservation easement program. So in exchange for, at the discretion of the selectmen, they can give her a percentage off her assessed value to reduce her taxes, and she agrees to maintain the barn for ten years. So the selectmen will review that application later. The Heritage Commission is very much in support of it. It's tools like that that I hope will see greater use here to preserve the amazing historic character of this town, which I think is our greatest asset. Would I be in favor of a seventy-five-room franchise hotel in Wolfboro? Absolutely not, and I think an awful lot of people in this room share that sentiment. We owe a real debt of gratitude to the people in this town who do stay in business year-round and who run their businesses sometimes on a shoestring in order to contribute to the economy of this community, and I couldn't agree more that we need to show them the support. I also think that part of the charm of this town is that we don't have... We do have small businesses sprinkled through our residential districts, and I think the Z B A has done a great job of balancing the demands of growth for those businesses in residential areas with upholding the zoning requirements and trying to maintain that small-town character that we all value. I also think that developing these architectural standards for commercial buildings is going to be really important for our community, and look forward to being part of that process. So just in closing, I would like to hope that you all hear my plea to support what we have, maintain the character of this town, and say no at this point to that franchise architecture and franchise-type businesses that erode the character of this small-town, which really is our greatest asset. Thank you.
Anyone else have some thoughts?
Question. The board that you own, Kathy, what type of support or what type of, I guess, through the website that do you have available for the inns, for events going on? How does that work? I'm curious, because I sit on the one in Center Harbor, and I'd like to see how that maybe differs from what we're doing in that town.
Sure. It's a danger of saying Kathy up here because she's Kathy Barner, and I'm Kathy, and that's okay, so just bear with us, we both look like we don't know. So, the Economic Development Committee in Wolfboro was established by the Board of Selectmen. It's appointed by the selectmen, it's not an elected. And our mission is to identify barriers or opportunities that will... To economic development in town, which will still maintain the character and culture of the town, all right? So that's the short version, it's pretty much it. So what do we have at our resources? The town of Wolfboro has a new website that's been up for about a year and a half. It has a section on it called Visitors. Right now, that Visitors section goes to the Chamber of Commerce's website. The Chamber of Commerce is in the process of reconstructing their website. So we have a thing that we're working together with the Chamber on to try to figure out exactly, you know, how we're going to make that work for this next year or so while that's going on. The Special Events Committee, which is going to be listening carefully to the harvest here and to other events that they're trying to develop. The Group Advertising Committee, which came out of this business retention and expansion thing that we did, Scott, and I don't want to wander from your question, and it might be, but they've identified the need for a master list place, and the Chamber is working on that, trying to do that, of all the events that we have, so that all the businesses together can coordinate when there is something going on, everybody knows about it. We've identified that as an issue that we're not doing well, like Brewster Academy, when they have an event, if we all know about it, you know? And that's kind of... And getting together tonight, this is an opportunity to just talk about those kinds of things, so... But were you asking about the E D C and what... This is the kind of thing we're trying to work on, and we're not going out looking for somebody to come in. Somehow, this has gotten to... People have gotten in their head that we're trying to promote a chain hotel, Wolfboro, and that is not at all the case. So there isn't any yes or no, or should we or not do that? We're just trying to help business, we're trying to help those little businesses downtown survive, you know, and stay here so we keep the... Keep the, maintain the character and the quality of the town we have now.
No, that's exactly it. I don't think, I see, to your point, you hit it on the head. There's no hotel chain that's coming in to this town with the amount of non-occupancy, the occupancy rate that we have here. It's just not going to happen, knowing hoteliers, not going to happen at this point in time. Until, like you said, we've got events at all of our establishments every weekend. We're busy throughout the winter. I agree. That's when a chain's going to look to come in and say, "Hey, look at this town."
We are missing people though, who are not staying here, who could be staying here, and it may be that it's only on those weekends. But I, only from my personal experience of knowing how we have to transport people from other areas to Wolfboro for events like weddings that do bring people to town, but they aren't staying here, and they aren't eating here, and that's a loss to us. So finding that measure, but I think, you know, it's for us all to talk about, but the need for growth in the off-season is something we can all easily agree on. And that's going to be the impetus of a group marketing plan that you're going to be hearing about, that we're going to be introducing and coming to you for support to then co-op with the Town of Wolfboro and with the Chamber of Commerce to promote things this next winter, so, in fall, winter, and spring. So you'll be hearing more about that, because that's what... And we need midweek packages, we need... You guys got to scratch your heads, come up with some things too, and we all can do it together. Anyway, it's not, I'm not supposed to be talking.
But there is a spot on your site that local businesses can get on and have a link to? Does it link in?
Okay, so, yes, the Town of Wolfboro site has a place for businesses, and we urge you to go into and get your business listed there. The Economic Development Committee does have a site on the town website as well, but there is a business directory on that website, and then the Visitors section links directly to the Chamber of Commerce's website.
And then, does the Chamber's site able to link with, I guess, is it a continuous process where the Chamber's site, if people go to the Chamber's site, or visitors are looking for the Chamber's site, it can go to the local business's site automatically also?
Yes.
It's all linked through? As long as you remember.
And you should be, yeah. And you should, from the town, you can link directly.
Center Harbor had the hardest time getting that to get done.
To get the people to do that, yeah. Please get on there with your businesses and do that. It's really simple, but if you have any question, has the new person been hired, Dave, that's going to be doing that? He can speak better to this than I can. I couldn't see him, but he's sitting.
Well, I was just planning on being an observer this evening and a participant, but yes, the Newtown website has a business directory. It's very easy to register your business and get on there, so I would encourage you to take advantage of that. It's free advertising, basically, for local businesses. And then, there is also a special events calendar on the town website, a community events calendar, I think is what it's called. And that's where we're trying to list all of the community events, not just those that the Board of Selectmen give permits for, but other events in the community also. We've been talking to blacks about, they sell tickets and have posters and bulletins for a lot of community events, so we're trying to get them so they can directly enter information about community events that they're aware of, and anybody else that knows of community events that are upcoming that you'd like to get listed on the town website, community events calendar, please send us the information. We can't put the information about the event up there if we don't know about it.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Shelley from the Winter Resort and Resort Street here. I've actually only been in the area for a little over a year and a half now, and I come from a big chain background. I've got thirty-four years in the industry itself before I moved up here to Wolfboro. And, you know, Wolfboro has a great amount of charm, and it's got a great amount of great personality that we can all work with. We're doing a lot of work with the Winter Resort right now, trying to really build up the marketing of the place to try and bring new people to Wolfboro, upgrading our rooms, upgrading our function spaces. We've got small functions, we've got a barn, which we do some receptions and things like that on. But Shelley, you have a really good point, you said, we've got a real employment snafu going on in this town because, you know, you're having to look from further out around the lake to bringing employees in here, and that's difficult, especially if you have a year-round problem. And even during the season, I mean, New Hampshire has a two-point-three percent unemployment rate, so that's rough, that's rough. So, I mean, it's bringing people to the state, bringing people to the smaller towns. But, Mrs. Shelley, I'm sorry to remember your name, we really need to look to ourselves and really promote ourselves.
Can I give you a hint on where your employees are sitting?
I'm sorry?
Can I give you a hint where your potential employees are sitting? They're sitting at home, and they're over the age of sixty-five, and they are bored out of their mind. They do not have to work four or six or eight hours. If you need them to clean two or three rooms, they'll clean three rooms, and they will show up every day.
I, you know, I am so open for that because that's the tough thing.
Just go to the community and offer that.
Yeah, we'll take anybody who wants to go over.
We've got, I've got constant ads running in, not only current stations, but on indie.com, I'm on the New Hampshire Job Works site, and there's just, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of lighting, so...
I have a question.
They're not looking. Don't make anybody go hire, go out and offer them the job. Go to the church up here on a, when they have the lunch, and say, "We need five people to clean three rooms a day. Who'd like to do that?" I guarantee you, you will get people because they're bored out of their mind, and they need something to do, and they can do it on their schedule and your schedule.
I have a question.
It doesn't have to be a formal type of thing. They're there, guaranteed.
I have a question I want to throw out, because it was mentioned to me by proprietor of a restaurant earlier this week, and this discussion about this real situation with help. And she said she felt that part of the problem that we're having with a lack of help in this state right now, she attributes to the opioid crisis. And I just kind of wanted to throw that out, put it in the back of your head and say, "Do you think that's true?" Because I, that's where there's a workforce problem. Has anybody else seen that with your staff and all that? So I'm just throwing that out to ask that question.
Instant microphone, man, I just... Boom, microphone, all right. So, here's an example. We have a very hard time staffing housekeepers. So we'll receive ten applications. We will call ten applicants. We will hear back from three. Two of them will schedule interviews. Maybe one will show up for the interview. So it's weird. So that's a low-scale job that is a low-paying job, and the hours are seasonal, and so it's not something that they can count on year-round and make the same amount of money. We also have a hard time hiring lineups. They're skilled, that are year-round, full-time people. So is it that? I mean, we all know the statistics of the number of persons that are active in the workforce has fallen, and the number of persons that are benefiting of some kind have this thing going on. So I can't speak to that specifically, but I know there, even though Wolfboro is an older town, there are young people who live here, and what are they doing? That's the question. I can't find that.
I'm going to interject her for just one second because I'm also on the advisory board for Kingston High School students for their hospitality program. And the last time I went to a meeting, a comment was passed, and it just kind of shook me to my core, was that there is a big misconception out there amongst a lot of the public that seems to think that, "Oh, I don't want my children to be bent for a living." So it's a real, it's a perception issue as to what this industry is really all about. It's, you know, it's identifying, you know what you want to do? We all love to travel. I love to travel. I've traveled all my, all my life. My father was in government service, so I've been all over the place. But it's got to be mine, something goes, you can't stay in a nice place unless you've got the people in the back of the house. What's going to be in the back of the house? We all can't do it by ourselves. So, you know, as individual managers and such as that, you've got to break that perception that, "Oh, yes, somebody has to make the bed." But that's what makes your stay that much better, you know? It's a way to earn a living, it's an honest living, it's a hard living, but we as managers of individual properties, we've all been there, you know? So I'm not, but I'm not going to bring somebody in... but I'm not going to bring somebody in and paint a rosy picture either, that this is, oh, that's annoying, he's got to smile and he ain't out keeping, and I've been told that too. So, so, it's a tough, but you work with it, and you keep moving forward, because you know it's worth it, and that's, that's really what I know that I have dedicated my career to, is going, yeah, it's difficult, yeah, you're going to have your hard times, but it's worth it, because we as all individual people, we're travelers too, we're worth it, so we keep plugging forward.
One of my daughters made beds at the lake motel when she was in high school, and we were here, it was a good job, she enjoyed it.
Well, thank you. Well, it's funny, it's funny you should say that, because I have called all the high schools and asked them to announce that the lake motel is looking for help, and I actually paid higher than anybody, I know, you know, I give the girls a really good pay, and I did it this year, and not one person showed up. And I called Kingswood, I said, "Do an announcement early in the morning to, you know, these students that the lake motel is looking for help." And I did that, every year, three years ago, I got four girls that were fantastic. The only problem is they were like fourteen, fifteen years old, and I'm like, oh my God, but they were the best employees, I, they were happy to come to work, they were, they were ready, but I don't know what the problem is with them, you know, I had put, I called Farmington, Rochester, Alton, do an announcement, I was speaking, saying that they're hiring, and this year we haven't got any more. But I'm, I'm going to tell you what's, what's going on, is they were hiring overseas. Dunkin' Donuts has hired eighty people from overseas. I have bought the house up front and the barn, we're making, I'm putting four people from Russia in there, they're going to work at Dunkin' Donuts, they're going to work for me. They are the hottest working kids I've ever been with. All they want to do is work eighty hours a week, two jobs, I don't charge them rent, because I just think that if somebody's going to come over here, they must have, but save every penny they have and send it overseas, I don't charge them for rent. But that's the situation we're getting here, is that more and more businesses are going overseas, and it's, it's too bad. I've tried like hell to get kids here who want to work. It's, it's a huge situation.
Hey, and you-
So, my daughter graduated from Johnson and Wales, she applied to two of the larger establishments in town here, so I think there's parts that I don't cross on, because she heard back from one and they didn't have an opening, she, the other one she called four or five times, and she got no response, she got scooped up by the Hyatt in Portland after first interview, so she started off stacking wood from us where she could walk, all the way through to making beds and everything else, and she is, she has an incredible position at the Hyatt right now, so I think people are being lost.
Do you know what kind of position she applied for?
In a house.
Like a mansion position, that was like an hour and a half.
She worked for, but we had, you know, Brewster and Wales students that were, you know, day students, who were year-round, even some that stayed over, some that worked for us, as well as Kingswood students, young people, we had a couple of older women, and we essentially have a staffing quality. Now, in season, their salary was only a limited amount of hours, and we have the same challenges that full-time people have, but for some reason, we've had a lot of kids who, for us, we say we should, make someone's better, but trash once in your life, perspective for the rest of your life. So, we go, you know, and we're not doing all that advocacy, it's really kind of, so...
Let, let me just mention that the Woodruff is another property that's in a residential zone, similar to the White Mountain Hotel, right, that's for sure.
And what do you think? Marcella?
Sounds awesome.
Cindy Cow, they are blacks, and so we have youths that we have to work with here frequently. What I've found is that, well, conceptually, I have a kid who will start a position and will be a clerk, and that pay and that position probably dictates about minimum wage. But what I've done is, is that I've recognized the fact that those kids are coming to me with much more of a skill set than some of the employees that I've had before, mostly because they're computer literate. I am proud to say that most of my employees that I've had have been with me for about four to six years, which for a college student who's returning after their third year of college is pretty incredible. But what I've done is, is that I've invested part of my business plan in my help. So, my kids have come to me with ideas about how to run my business, how to be more active on social media, how to have events, and that in and of itself is what has created less of a problem for my employees. They're going to recommend somebody who they want to work with, not because they're somebody they like, but it's because it's somebody that's not going to be slacking, and picking, they're picking up their slack. I can only say that I think that's, that's a methodology that worked for Bailey Roadside for a really long time. It may be something that while that position dictates a certain wage, you may have to stretch past that and get those kids to come back the second year. The training piece alone is worth having your employee return. The training piece alone is expensive. I would just suggest that maybe you offer some incentive for them partway through the season, just to keep their interest. And, you know, they have expenses too, they've got the cell phone to pay for, driver's ed to pay for, there's some incentive for them to be there as well. They want to contribute, but the job has to be something that allows them to have the latitude to do that. I don't know if that's possible in your industry, but, you know, they definitely are surprisingly observant when you ask that, the trick is to ask.
Thank you.
The, the New Hampshire Restaurant and Lodging Association did a study, and I, and I am not going to try to dictate what the numbers were, when it was done, but it was within the last five years of why we are having these employment issues. And for the hospitality industry, restaurant industry, cooks and whatnot, that, that age group is from the eighteen to thirty-five to maybe thirty-eight years old, they're moving out of New Hampshire. That, that, they're gone. At eighteen, nineteen, twenty, they're leaving, they're looking to be in a large city, more things going on and whatnot. So, the, and I don't know what the percentage of those people were that were leaving the state, what was coming into the state was the retired, was people retiring into the state of New Hampshire. So, the growth, there was, you know, the growth in, you know, what was leaving and what was coming in was offsetting each other, but the age group was not a working age group. So, the hospitality industry working, you know, looking where I think is made up mostly between that eighteen and thirty-five to forty-year-old age group that, in the hospitality industry, is leaving, leaving New Hampshire. The pe, the kids that are coming into New Hampshire for the summertime have gone to, are, are in college. Their parents don't care if they work, they don't care if they work, and that work ethic is just not there, that I would say a majority, and that's not for everyone, believe me, I've got some fourteen-year-old kids, fifteen-year-old kids that just do stuff on the side, and sixteen-year-old kids, the, that if I had forty of them, I would be happy. And I've got some people that are in their fifties and sixties that are working for me, that if they had the work ethic that some of these twenty and thirty-year-old kids had, I would be ecstatic. So, it's a lot to, to think that it's, it's, you know, some of it may be the opioid, but I, I don't think, you know, I think, I don't think that's the issue. The issue is, people are leaving, our workforce is leaving the state. What's coming into the state are retire, are more retirees than we have workforce coming in.
We, we see this in, in every one of the business associations in the state that, that some of us on the EDC are involved with, and New Hampshire Division of Economic Development is one of the subjects we talk about, is trying to keep the young people who grow up here and even are educated here, to stay in our state. But one of the things we've found, seems to be, and we see it in some of the businesses, small businesses, we have a few of them here in town that are doing well with young people, is that our kids may leave, but then people come back here because it's a great place to raise a family. And so, we see it, like we trade our kids who have to go someplace else, you've got to go out in the world, and then some of them come back. But then sometimes we find people who come here, people who get married, and then they buy a house here because they've just found Wolfboro and they like it, so there's a, there's a trade-off. But I think, i, i, if I'm hearing, the job situation is really important, the, the help situation is critical for you. Would a job fair help? If we, if we were to sponsor something like that with the schools and try to drag them in or anything like that? I mean, just tossing it up, what do you think?
That's a great idea, wouldn't hurt.
Wouldn't hurt, wouldn't hurt.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt. They've tried to do it in the Conia, they've tried to do it in Belmont, and the response was incredibly low. You know, hospitality industry is probably one of the hardest industries in, in, in the country or in the world to work in. We've got some crazy hours.
Yeah, it's very physical.
It is very physical, not that there aren't other jobs and there's, but, you know, our industry is, it's early mornings, it's late night, it's on your feet, it's kitchens, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking for sympathy, there's other jobs that are out there that are twice as hard and twice as treacherous.
Not near as hard.
But, no, but, um, but, you know, and what you're saying is you have families that are, to your point, where you have families coming back into town and to raise their children. Hospitality hours don't work for, for moms and dads. It's not, it's not, it's not. So, that age group where we're looking for, honestly, is, you know, the retirees that want to put in, like you said, four or five hours, maybe two or three days a week, doing some maintenance, maybe turning some beds, whatever it may be, answering the phones, great.
Maybe a job fair shouldn't be aimed just at the schools, we ought to aim it at whatever the population we have and that, so, so maybe that's something that we could help. Housing for, for staff is, is important. Where are they going to stay? Dave's found a way to get some housing because he, so, so that's another issue, so that's something that we can be looking at. These are the things we need to know, that can, that can help, help us, so... Oh, and by the way, if you know anybody who's looking to, dreamed of driving a trolley this summer, please send them my way. Anybody else? Yes?
My name's Steve, I have the cottage in Wolfboro, having a lot of fun, very, but I'm certainly not the size of us to record the history. But I'm just curious about, you know, it's not a little bit, it seems to me that we've heard of some things that were done a couple years ago, a new quarter was being set up, so they go from the lake into the town, that is wonderful. I just think that if there's a year-round market, if the snow supports us.
Oh, you mean, you need to have a year-round, no, no, no.
Well, being, being an avid snowmobiler, that's only, that's my, that's my out, is going snowmobiling. Because of the snow conditions, because of the trail conditions, the lack of trails, the lack of places to go to by trail, really inhibits, snowmobilers coming and wanting to, to ride here. A snowmobiler that is going to, a family that is going to invest in snowmobiling, you're talking ten to fifteen thousand dollars plus for a snow, one snowmobile, you're talking a vehicle to tow that, uh, tow that machine, a trailer to put that in, they're going north to guarantee good snowmobiling, good trails, good contrail, trail conditions, and maintain trail conditions. Unfortunately, we don't have that guarantee here. The lake has got, over the last couple of years, a bad rap, not, not of its own fault, out of sometimes unfortunate instances, sometimes, uh, somebody's not thinking upstairs about what they're doing, where they're going, and how they're doing. But it's, um, New Hampshire is, has, growing up in the snowmobiling industry, snowmobiling from, I would say, the White Mountains South has diminished, has really diminished.
Mary, you want to comment?
Sure, so I've been handed the microphones, I think I'm, I'm being asked to speak to that, and so from, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we have also, over the years, identified the snowmobile industry as being of, of huge value to Wolfboro and of course the state. In fact, the University of New Hampshire, there was a study done, oh, I think it's three years out now, about the dollars that's, the snowmobiling industry brings into the state, and we, the Chamber of Commerce agrees that Wolfboro was missing out. So, together with the Town of Wolfboro, the Board of Select, the Selectmen in particular have been very supportive of trying to make sure that Wolfboro is accessible to those snowmobile enthusiasts when the weather and all the other elements cooperate. I agree with you, Scott, I know that this winter in particular, the different snowmobile clubs were faced with more challenges than ever, they have private, they're dependent on private property owners to connect their trail systems, and unfortunately, there's been some scenarios that have made those, pushed those, some of the property owners to change their minds and say, "No, no thank you, we don't want our property a part of your trail system." So, it's like all these different elements coming to, playing together along with the weather. And, and Dave, I think that, you're probably thinking there was some good snow about three years ago, and we had, the Chamber of Commerce with the town had created the access into Cape Park, and we had, it was so much fun to see snowmobiles park there, and talking with some people who had, and I quote, had said, "You know, we come here for the summer, but we never thought of coming out to eat in the winter in Wolfboro." So, we, we really don't want to let go of that. We can't control the weather, but we can make sure that there are trails coming into Wolfboro, in and out of Wolfboro in any way we can, and there are lots of things we've tried, or I should say, hope to try if we had the snow, and we'll keep doing that. And just whatever, I just think this, I guess as a side note, this is an incredible conversation, and the fact that you all took your time to come together through the town's invitation from the planning board is fantastic. I, from the Chamber of Commerce perspective, to see all of you talking together on lodging properties, I think that has to be, it's this nice thing to listen to, and also, I'd imagine, very valuable to one another.
Thank, thank you, Mary.
I'm Steve Durk, I run Goodwin Hawkins Idiota, and in a very real sense, I'm very beholden to all of the hospitality people here, because the people that have come to our arena and rent boats almost exclusively are doing so because they can stay in various establishments in and around Wolfboro. I, I'd just like to give a little different interpretation of the summer help situation, not trying to criticize anybody else, just telling you of our experiences. We don't have any trouble whatsoever getting summer workers. We hire between twelve and twenty students every year, most of whom come back for four to seven years and work with us. We try to get them out of high school, whether it be Kingdood Regional or Brewster Academy, but we also get them from a large number of our summer visitors. Wolfboro, as everybody knows, grows exceedingly large in the summertime with a lot of families. I can't tell you how many employees we get that come up here in May and work through August to be a part of our summer program. As a matter of fact, we could not run our arena without the students that really have the face of Goodwin Hawkins, most of our customers. I actually turned down eight applicants for two that I hired for summer work, and they're very, very high-caliber workers as a result. At the end of the season, our customers always say that they're the finest young people that they get to see. Now, I'm not saying that to, to- Now, I'm not saying that to pat ourselves on the back, I'm just saying that to let you know there are a lot of quality workers available in the town of Wolfboro. How to get to them, I can only tell you, I've been doing it for thirty years, so I kind of built up a resume and I know the families and so forth. But I, just this week, I had eight people apply for some jobs that are already taken. Now, as far as other positions are concerned, we have an open forklift position that we just filled, a forklift driver, and a mechanic's position that we have not filled. We advertise mostly on Indeed.com. The two positions, we have fifty-six applicants, three of whom were marginally qualified. The rest were qualified to do a lot of things, but not drive a forklift and not repair a boat. But they wanted to work in Wolfboro, many of them were from the area and many were willing to relocate. So I guess what I'm saying is, don't give up. Try to change some of your strategies because they are out there. And we have the regional high school here from a lot of different towns. We have Brewster Academy. And we have young people from the sixty-four thousand boats that have registered on Lake Hurabasaki that are looking for summer jobs because they come up here. We have to find a way to do it. I love the idea of a job fair. Because I do believe that if we held it at the right time of year and we had nice, you know, displays of the various places to work, and you took names and gave interviews to people, that people would want to work for many of the businesses here. So I don't think we have to go outside of the country to find workers, but if you do, that's fine.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else?
Can I ask, what hours do people that you employ work?
And we start at seven in the morning and we go through eight P.M. Now, we don't expect people to work those long hours. We have thirty-two rental boats and they're being turned over weekly, but sometimes daily. So we have to have a crew to clean those rental boats. But one of the ways that we have a minor league team for our summer workers, we have a lot of kids that are fifteen and just barely sixteen that want to work for us. We don't hire them because they're staywags and turn for machinery and so forth. So we hire those people to come in between five P.M. and eight P.M. every day. And they simply clean our boats and get them ready for the next morning. Then those people are given the first dibs on the summer job for the next year. The next thing that we do is we had a real problem with college, snapping up all of our workers about August fourteenth. Not good in the summer, for sure. So what we did is we took some of these young people and said, "Well, why didn't you plan on working for us the last two to three weeks of the summer? And then you have the first shot at the job the next year." And then we hired them on weekends in Canada in the fall to help put boats away. But in doing it that way, we kind of deep fraud, and we always have five to six people that have been there for a long time, and five to six people who are middle, and then seven or eight or nine people that are in their first year. And we just try to make it so that we always have a good mix of experienced and new people, so that they train the ones coming in. But we've tried to adapt and overcome some of the obstacles that we have. And for our industry it works, may not for yours. Again, it's not a criticism, it's just that we've been able to do it. A lot of the people that come to work for us think it's a real glory job to be out there pumping gas. So the first thing I do during the interview is abuse them of that notion. I don't know if you've ever seen Karate Kid, wax on, wax off. It's hard work, but treated right, they come back year after year. Was that you?
Okay, anyone else?
I have a question for Scott.
Yeah?
Scott, thanks that you stepped forward on the snowmobile issue. That's great information. I really haven't had a lot of interaction with it since the early seventies myself. But I'm wondering if trails are the things that really generate interest or events. I love the vintage things that happen in town here that pull a lot of people into... The whole idea of being the oldest snowmobile in America, and anything historical, and I fill up.
Yeah, anything, anything, thank you, anything vintage, snowmobile events. I travel here, twelve hours in a car to go snowmobiling.
To what?
To go snowmobiling some places in Canada. There are, there's winter carnivals that we go to Canada for, we go snowmobiling. We ended up, you know, we ended up right in Quebec City, go to the carnivals at night, then winter carnival is outside, it's a big, you know, outside winter carnival. There's vintage races up in Pittsburgh, probably one of the largest or busiest weekends up in Pittsburgh. That can all, I mean, I remember growing up as a kid, going down to Meredith Harbor, ice races. Good God, you couldn't get near the place. I mean, they were having the ice races.
That's what I was wondering, because my reaction was, events really drove the...
Events do drive snowmobilers. They like to go to destinations where there are things going on.
It's just the alter personality to the Harley riders.
No, I think the Harley riders are similar. I mean, they've got, they're in the same sort of disposable income. Harley riders have changed over the years. So they're in the same disposable income as snowmobilers. I think snowmobilers probably spend a little bit more than Harley riders do just because of the amount of, just, I mean, the amount of money people spend on snowmobiles is huge when they go snowmobiling. You know, family afford to go snowmobiling for one night between gas. I mean, you've got to figure each snowmobile's a hundred dollars for registration.
I'm just thinking, Loudon Rally is known, at least the country, not the world, is there, are there snowmobile rallies that are like that as well?
There are snowmobiles at Valcourt, Canada has some, Pittsburgh has the old, the vintage snowmobile races up in Pittsburgh. They have what's called the Snow Dino up in Pittsburgh where manufacturers are showing all their new, their new, their new sleds for the next season. So there are quite a few things that do go on. I remember at one point, back years ago, that there was, like, boats and motorcycles do poker runs with snowmobiles. And that's, and you can go from town to town to town around the lake and have that and it ends up somewhere, you know, for the end of the night. Those are big, they attract a lot of people. So it is, it is a viable, you know, way to get people to come into town. But when you're doing that, you have to have, there has to be good access. Because some of these people, when I leave, like, there's, you know, you need to have taxis, you need to have access to restaurants, you need to have access to hotels via trail. I leave, I leave, I go over the border in Canada, I park my car, my backpack and my saddlebags are on my snowmobile. I don't come back to that hotel for five days. I don't see a car, I don't get in a car for five days. I'm on a snowmobile traveling fifteen hundred to two thousand miles within those, within those four or five days. So that is, so you have to have this, you have to have, there has to be infrastructure in order to do those type of events or hold those type of rallies or things like that.
What about snowmobile races?
Snowmobile racing is big. It is, there's a lot of liability that's involved with the races, but, you know, Wolfboro Bay here would be the perfect spot to have ice drag races. They used to have them in Meredith, they've had them on Turkey Pond, they have them up in, outside of Franklin. I can't remember the lake that's up there, I drive by it to go to Sankey all the time.
Vintage snowmobile race like we do in...
But there is, I mean, there's always, it's, it's a, it's a, it's, that part of snowmobiling is diminishing a little bit, the ice races, the racing. But there's still, I mean, this is a great, great spot to have, you know, ice races or ice drag.
Another thing that generated, maybe, I'm not sure if you're bored with the things I'm bringing up, but that, another thing that really generated a lot of interest at my place was the, this new pond hockey craze.
Oh, it's huge. Pond hockey's huge. I'm out on, I'm out on the lake with my smoker and that is, I tell you, that is a huge...
And what a great group of guys.
Scotty does an unbelievable job. He does an unbelievable job doing that pond hockey tournament. Unfortunately, it's not going to go anywhere else.
Sounds like we've got really good volunteers for our special event committee day, don't you think? That's it, it's, we work together and put, you know, some things together and we can make a huge difference. But I think it's been a wonderful exchange this evening. Anything else that you think of, if you think of it later on? Our emails are right there on wolfboronh.us. So feel free to get in touch with us about anything, if we have an idea for a special event or things like that. But it does, it takes times like this where we kick ideas around and then from there when we begin to look together. So anything else you think of, so, anyone? Yes, Scott? Okay, anyone else?
I have one question for everyone. There was the event that was in Wolfboro that had, it was a beer tasting that was out in the water, on a pond, on a bay. How did that go over for everyone? Did anyone see any business from that?
There are two events. One is held on Ninety Mile Bay, and that's sponsored by Liz Beveridge and her group, and that's been a great success. And I don't know if it's two or three years, Mary. Are you talking about Fisherville, the attempt we had down at...
Yeah, Ninety Mile Bay was one and then...
You're asking the other lodge...
Yeah, the other lodge, yeah, the other lodge properties, if they, if they saw anything in that or...
Anything from Fisherville?
Yeah. No, what about the one on Ninety Mile Bay, no?
It's for locals.
It's for locals, yeah.
Yeah, we have the ice, we put anything there, two years we've tried it in Fisherville, we didn't have the ice in the Lishu. We tried to have it down at, down at Town Dogs. First weekend in March, it was eight above and everything was cold, especially the beer. So, but it didn't, anyone didn't...
Can I get that?
Yeah. I can get a turn on.
Am I on there? Okay. I sound very important all of a sudden. So the Wolfboro Inn is trying to do exactly as Charles recommended, which is to hold some events to bring in some off-season business for ourselves. And so for two years now, we've had an ice bar event for two dates in February. So on a Friday night and a Saturday night. We're trying to do something similar to what the Bedford Village Inn has been doing for years, and they do it for five days. We're just doing two. So the first year that we did it, a hundred and fifty people came on Friday night, Saturday night, we had two hundred and twenty-five. We did have people who traveled from Massachusetts to go. So this past February was the second year, Saturday night, we had three hundred and twenty-five people came.
That's awesome.
So is this something that maybe that weekend, a few of us can do something and we can slowly turn it into a town festival weekend? Yeah, we had three hundred and twenty-five people on Saturday night. We had overnight packages that we sold, we had more people traveling to stay overnight, so, you know.
That's what they do in Quebec, in their carnival, their winter carnival, there's every bar or restaurant has an outside sort of, outside ice bar, some type of event going on outside. In the city, they've actually built one of the, what do they call it, skating cross rink. I mean, not to that extent, but I mean, this is downtown Quebec City, it's absolutely nuts. Right now, I mean, you try six months, you can't not get a hotel room in that city, nor can you find one within a ten or fifteen mile radius of downtown. So winter events like that don't, don't have to be on the ice. They can be in the town or in the city or whatnot. The ice bar thing, I think, is a great idea. If you had three or four locations that people could go to, and it was a week-long, or a weekend-long event, or five or six or seven different places they could go to, I think that would be a great idea, doing things like that. I know Center Harbor in the summertime, we do, we do a lobster fest. You know, it brings a lot of people into town, we have this big lobster bake, we close downtown, the downtown streets off. This year, we're doing a brews and barbecue event. So this fall, we're having a huge, you know, pig roast out there that some of the, you know, microbrewies or breweries are getting behind. But it's, you know, it's, they're trying to do the same thing that we're trying to do here, is get people to recognize Wolfboro out of season or in their off-season.
Do you think it would be helpful if all your folks who are in the lodging business here were to meet like this, only in a little different way, so you could talk about these kinds of things or connect by email or something like that? So then ideas bounce around, so you know what each other's doing, like this fire and ice thing is just, that's what it's called, right? Yeah, fire and ice, awesome. And it's good for one, you know, and we're all in the same boat here, we can all rise, you know, we're not competing with each other. We're in one destination, working together, and when we can play off of each other and help. So I know that Mary has an event coming up here in the Bay, the, help me out with that. So to put in, to put in a plug, say, everybody come on, what's your problem?
Wolfboro area, Decks and Dogs party, I mean, it's Saturday.
Got a deck or a dock or none, you're supposed to be part of the party. And I know that it's something that the Chamber's working on, it's coming up right away. So I know, somebody's got to be in touch to get an email chain going so everybody can be together. So you all are in contact, this has been such a great exchange, hasn't it? What a good idea. Thank you, planning board.
If, on the, having the hospitality thing, take a look at the Chatham, Kip, Chamber of Commerce. And they have, underneath the Chamber of Commerce, they have the Chamber of Commerce. Then they have a subcommittee that is nothing but lodging, and they have another subcommittee that is nothing but restaurants. But it's all part of the Chamber of Commerce, so it all ties together. I fully agree that you should have a lodging group, but if you go off on your own, you're going to water and shit. Somehow go under the chamber, but it should be a separate group. So you're meeting and you should be meeting at least once a month, if not twice a month, as a lodging group, to come together with all of these ideas so that you can put them together. But if you do it under that thing, then it filters out into the retail, it filters out into the restaurants. To give you an idea of my experience, I gave up my TV seven years ago because I was paying for ninety channels, number three, that were worthwhile watching. So I wanted to watch the Super Bowl playoff, so I went down to the Bayside Grill because they've got three hundred TVs in there and they make good pizza. They were not sure on, for the play, not the Super Bowl, but for the game two weeks before that, if they would have enough people at eight o'clock when it's their normal closing time to stay open that night. When I, they managed to do it, but when I left and I went by Garwoods, Garwoods didn't have enough people on that night for football to stay open, they were closed. And on the Super Bowl night, that place was not full. Now, you would think that you would not be able to move in a place that sells ten hundred beers and they've got a good beer on tap and everything, and that many TVs for a Super Bowl game that featured the Patriots. And there were seats available. Now, that tells you where the global support is, it's not here. So for the hospitality and for the restaurants, you have to bring people in from outside of Wolfboro on a year-round basis to survive.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and thank you all. Really appreciate your candor. And planning board is going to be looking at all of the zoning issues that came up. EDC will be looking at the other issues, the route right to their committee. And as far as zoning is concerned, if there are changes to be made... And, uh, as far as zoning is concerned, if there are changes to be made, it'll be a little public meetings on my end, so it'll be, we now have, uh, your contact information, so. Again, thank you very much for your guidance. Thank you.